September 7th. Okay. This is the September 7th meeting of the Board of Supervisors at 9:00 a.m. I want to start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge. I'll ask Supervisor Gerald Steen to lead us in the prayer. Could everybody put the phones off, Sal, also?
Let us pray. Father Lord, thank you for being a good God, Lord. Thank you for always being tentative to our needs and our ask, Lord. We always know that you're there for us. And Father, just thank you for the things that you have blessed us with in the state of Mississippi and then in Madison County, Lord, that things we take for granted, Lord. We know that it all comes from you. Father, just thank you for yesterday for our holiday, Lord, that many people took the day off, Lord, and enjoyed with families and family and friends. Father, we just thank you for that. But most of all, Lord, we thank you for being our Savior, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So I can lead us in.
Pinchot, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there we go. All right. Mr. Chancellor Furt.
Good morning, Troy.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. President. You have before you the August 16th board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes to board. Please approve said minutes.
Any changes, anybody?
Motion approved.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's been approved. We have now concerned citizens.
Tanya Green.
Yeah, you can keep on coming.
Mr. President, Tanya Green is the first concerned citizen.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Green.
You tell Kenead and Tim come here. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Give us your name and your address for the clerk over there.
My name is Tanya Green and my address is 883 Highway 16 West, and that's Canton, Mississippi.
Okay. You, you're talking about the drainage on Piersby Bottom Road?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's stopped up, but I guess people have dumped things in there like septic tank and couches and everything. I also have some pictures of what's in there.
That shows what's in my yard after.
Oh, wow.
That's in your front yard, backyard, backyard.
Don't worry, it's not flooded.
You take time.
This is flooding. It's just, it's just that made it in the house right now.
Exactly. And that's routinely, they routinely dump stuff in your yard.
I didn't know it was this.
Okay. It is, we can get a clean bill.
Hey, Ms. Green, could you do the microphone voice? Thank you.
I guess this, this covers your cross drain.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Can I ask her a question now? She asked you.
Yes, two covers.
Okay, I didn't know that it was in there, so the yard guy, I was trying to figure out why the water was doing it because I've been there like 17 years and I never had that problem. So he went and looked and took those pictures for me. He saw all that was in there.
Who, who went look?
The yard guy.
Yard guy?
Yes, sir.
Kenead, you know anything about this?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Yes.
Good morning, board.
Oh.
What you got going on there? Like I said, debris in there and also it's just not only causing a problem to her yard, but the house crawls in front of her, it washed the whole shoulder off because the water crossed Piersby Bottom, the whole road. It's not just going. The Piersby Bottom right in front of the house, it's this crossroad now erased. We just did the shoulder on the road about last month, I think it was, because it had just been washed, the whole shoulder away from the asphalt. And the guy crawled streak from her named Jane Martin, he had been complaining about it because when the war was done, when they come, by the debris stop, when they come across Piersby Bottom, the road, it hardly gets done. So without, it erodes and the guy passed out because all the water just flowed in. It's not just a steady channel going through, it just, like snake trail through there. But it really gonna have to do something to it.
Do you have a recommendation or do we need to send Tim, the engineer, out there?
Well, you can send Tim or, well, what you need to do is just the board give us an ease to go back and clean all that out, that ditch there back there on her property line, unless she'll solve her problem.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And what, what was that motion saying?
Give them right away to clean the ditches out, right?
Yeah.
You have to do anything.
Yeah, temporary easement.
Temporary easement.
And we get that from whom?
From the landowner.
Mike, you gonna, you gonna go ahead and take care of that from?
I've got a standard easement that's been drawn up. I can just get hurt, I can get too hurt.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Make, make, make sure Tim get your information.
Sure.
Okay.
Tim, that's Tim right there.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Supervisors, Kerry Miniger is next on your list.
Okay. Mr. Miniger, come right ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I have a concern about an item that's coming up on the agenda. Uh, it's a development that, that Calhoun Station and Church Road. They're proposing a entrance off of Calhoun Station between the New Exxon Station and the intersection. And I've got quite a bit of information that I've researched, and I'd like to just read a few of these items for you to consider. This first information is from the National Association of City Traffic Officials, and they state that driveway design should prevent the need for undue deceleration in a traffic lane. And if you look at the design that they're proposing, that driveway is in the merge lane off of Church Road on the Calhoun Station Parkway. Also, the functional area of that intersection is 395 feet. I know a lot of people don't realize that when they look at an intersection, but they consider the functional area, the working area of that intersection, since it's signalized to be 395 feet, and that's at a 30 mile an hour speed limit.
Mr. Miniger.
Yes.
Um, you said this is coming up on our agenda.
Right.
This is the Calhoun Station, Church Road retail plan?
That's correct.
Okay, and this plan was approved by the, um, planning commission?
Right. They did request a traffic be study, a traffic study be done on that area, and I haven't seen any information on that, but I'm going based on.
Well, it, it would be best then, I think, for this board and for you, then if, when Scott Weeks comes up and we take this issue up at that point.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Because right now, you know, you giving us some information that.
Hell, no idea what he talking.
Yeah, nobody have any idea what you talking about.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that.
And it, it would be best, it, it should, it should come up at that point as opposed to now.
I'm good.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay. Next.
Any more concerned citizens?
Uh, there's no more concerned citizens. Well, all citizens are concerned, but no more signed up.
That's correct. Mr. Carden is next on your agenda.
Okay, Tommy.
Mr. President, Tommy Carden, 176 Green Glades, Ridgeland, Mississippi. And, Mr. President, members of the board, I'm privileged to be here with you this morning to be able to give you a brief update on recent visits that we made on your behalf to our congressional delegation in Washington, D.C. On July the 22nd, myself, President Banks, and Mr. Steen, Board Attorney Espy, and the engineers Joe Wagner and Carl Ray Fur, went to D.C. and we had scheduled visits with several members of our congressional delegation. We started out meeting with Kendall Moore, who is a legislative aide to Senator Cindy Hyde Smith, who handles her transportation and infrastructure issues. Had a good visit with her, followed that with an in-person meeting with Senator Wicker and several of his staff members who worked with us on the transportation and infrastructure issues. Following that, we had an in-person meeting with Congressman Thompson and his chief of staff about our projects. We weren't able to meet with Congressman Guest, but that was a scheduling issue on our part, simply we just had a compressed timeframe and couldn't fit it in, but we will, we'll follow up with him in due course. We had, we had very good meetings, we think, with all of these members. We essentially had two ask or two request that we were making when we were with them. The first was to support our application for a raise grant. You all are familiar with the raise grant application that we've been working on throughout the year. We submitted it several months ago, and that's a $12 million ask. It's a $32 million project, and the grant ask is 12 million. And we asked each member of the delegation to support that and, and help us. They were very enthusiastic about it and indicated they would. We also had another request, a specific request for $4 million that would be dedicated to segment one of the Bozeman Road project. We were able to get that included as a, as a designated project as part of the House Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill, which recently passed the House. And then we also, Senator Hyde Smith and Senator Wicker, both included that specific request in their appropriations request for the Transportation, Housing and Urban Development Bill that will be considered for appropriations a little bit later on this year. So we had both of those asked. We, we've, we received very, as I say, enthusiastic response from staff and the members themselves in support of those projects. And since that time, since we've gotten back, you've probably seen in the news the passage of the bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed the Senate. That passed, I think it was August the 10th is when that was adopted. Senator Wicker supported that, voted in favor of it. That is a, really a comprehensive infrastructure bill that will provide quite a bit of funding for the state of Mississippi as a whole going forward, and it will also present Madison County with some opportunities for funding that otherwise would not have existed. So certainly appreciative of Senator Wicker's support for, for that particular bill. Between now and the end of the year, there's a lot that's going to be taking place. There, there are various vehicles that are out there now pending before the Senate and pending before the House that have these, these appropriations in them. Not really sure exactly how it's going to pan out. We won't know until all the dust settles by the end of the year because there's going to be a lot of debate about infrastructure funding. You're going to hear a lot about that. You're also going to hear and see a lot about budget reconciliation, trying to get a budget adopted for the next fiscal year. So there's going to be a lot of activity taking place that both the Senate and the House get, come back into session next week, the Senate first, the House a little bit later. So it's going to be a really busy time, and I guess the, the advice I have for you is stay tuned. Stay tuned, and we will stay engaged on your behalf. We will continue to follow up with members of the delegation as well as their staff, and hopefully when all the dust settles, we'll see some positive benefit from Madison County. So, Mr. President, I appreciate this time. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, Tommy, we appreciate you coming, giving us the update.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Supervisor Steen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to follow up a little with what Tommy just brought us up to date with Senator Wicker. We have a resolution there of support, and this is concerning the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act Bill that he supported, and just give you just a, two or three things of a breakdown. This is a potential means for Mississippi, $3.3 billion for Mississippi, potentially, in that, in that bipartisan bill that he participated in. Also, just break it down a little bit more, $225 million is for bridge replacement and repairs. That money would come from, from C and PDD or the state through state aid grants or the state aid through the counties. That's how that money would, would come to us. Also, what this bill does, it increases MDOT's money as well by $200 million, which that will help meet some needs throughout the state of Mississippi, and, and it could, and we're working on it as far as widening Interstate 55, you know, from 463 going north. So that could, that monies could help there as well. Also, it, it gives monies $100 million for broadband to Mississippi. That's a big potential and a big need for Mississippi. So when you, when you look at this, this bipartisan bill that Senator Wicker supported, it is good for Mississippi, and that's the reason that the resolution is on the, on our agenda today is to show, hey, we appreciate you and thank you for looking, looking into this and supporting it, and because Mississippi can get a lot of monies from this bill if it passes the House. It has passed the Senate and is in the House now in Congress. So we do have this resolution, and, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Will we approve it? What are we approving?
Oh, the resolution supporting what Roger Wicker has done in terms of the bipartisan vote.
Y'all have to approve it.
Ma'am?
Like on the bottom, we all approve it.
Yeah, so that was a resolution. The motion was made for us to vote on it, and our second emotion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will approve, we'll all.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, the next, we have a public hearing, adoption of Madison County 21.
Mr. President. Mr. President, before we get into public hearing, can we address the state of emergency that we had related to Hurricane Ida?
Okay.
Uh, you may all remember that not this past weekend, but the prior weekend, we were anticipating some serious weather in Madison County because of Hurricane Ida that destroyed much of Louisiana, our neighbor, and as well as some significant damage to our neighboring counties in South Mississippi. What we would like to do at this point is to present to you the emergency declaration that was signed by the board president and a brief update from the emergency manager and the sheriff about things that they saw over those few days.
Board President, board, good morning.
Morning.
Just a quick update on Hurricane Ida. We dodged a bullet. Only thing we pretty much suffered was a lot of trees on properties, private properties, and we assisted Ridgeland, Ridgeland Place, a nursing home. They had a couple partnering facilities to come bring patients there, so I had to go out and try to find beds, in which we were successful doing it. So that's the only place business-wise that took a big hit, and on behalf of Madison County, we took care of them on that end.
Okay.
And, Mr. Sheriff, do you have an update for things that you saw?
Just briefly, like Albert said, we did, we really dodged the brunt of the storm. We had a few trees down in, in right of ways that the road department took care of really quickly. Didn't have any major backups in traffic flow or anything, so I think we, God had his hand on us for sure. We, Albert and I were in constant contact, and Shelton and I had a couple of discussions over that period, and we came out really well on the, on the, on this storm, for sure.
Okay, any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody having questions?
I just want to add to it, Sheriff, you know, the great job our road department done on these storms and all the other storms. When we bucking down at home, they be, they out there putting their boots on, ready to go move these trees. So, Kenead, thanks to you and your guys.
Good job. Okay.
Okay, then I would like for you to vote to approve this, and based, based on information we have right now, this will expire in 30 days because to, to our knowledge, there's no continuing damage for us to be working with.
Is that motion?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Now we're ready for the public hearing?
Ready.
Motion?
Okay. We, go, go ahead and take the motion to go into.
Public hearing.
The public hearing.
Second, third motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. President, Supervisors, there's a copy of the proposed budget on your online agenda as well as one in front of you this morning. Just starting out, I want to point out to you a couple of things that are on your agenda. Number one is a let, the public hearing, I'm sorry, the public advertisement that was placed in the newspaper to advertise for today's hearing. Second is a copy of the proposed tax levy and budget, and then following that, you have a letter from the city of Canton related to their landfill or garbage collection activities, and I will try to address all of those in order. First off, just speaking generally about the tax levy and the budget. The tax levy itself remains the same. There is no proposed change in the tax levy, but if you will look on the tax levy document that's in with the proposed levy, there are a couple of highlighted items that I wanted to draw your attention to. For the general county, the, the county mills remain at 3018, 38.18 as proposed, but for this year, for the 2020 fiscal year, the newly incorporated city of Gluckstat and the newly incorporated areas of Canton, which are out toward King Ranch, and then over toward, over off of Fulton Street in the city, those areas. Garbage service area, therefore those areas of a city that normally do not have our garbage tax collected from them will have the garbage tax, the 3.85 mils of solid waste tax collected because they will be in our service area for our garbage collection. That is what the letter from the city of Canton addresses, and it's also the conversation that your attorney and I have had with the city of Gluckstat because they have not been able to get a garbage contract in place at this time. Next, you'll see for the 2020 fiscal year, the fire protection tax will, by law, applies to a city unless the city notifies us that they are taking responsibility for certain fire protection activities. We do expect, based on our conversation with Gluckstat, to have that letter from Gluckstat by your next meeting, but it is not available today. So until we have that letter in place, by statute, we have to impose that fire protection tax on everyone, including municipalities, until we get that letter in hand. That letter is supposed to be delivered tomorrow, but my recommendation to you is that you levy the tax on the city of Gluckstat residents. Remember, they've already been paying this tax. This is not a new tax to them. That you levy that tax until the city of Gluckstat provides that letter, and if that letter is provided, we will acknowledge that in a future meeting. And then also draw attention to North Madison County Fire District with eight mills. This is a new fire district, you may recall, and this eight-mill levy was referenced as an increase in the public notice that was put in the newspaper. Yes, sir.
I don't know how that fire district got named North Madison County Fire District, but it's named Central Madison County Fire District.
Okay.
You can't claim us. In the north.
Okay, I think the documents that the resolution included north, but maybe at the next meeting, we can do a knock pro tonk to change that.
Central Madison County.
Okay, and then we will change it on this, on this tax levy.
Right.
Today, okay?
Okay.
Okay, before I move on, general comments, anything else about the tax levy? Again, the fire tax for Gluckstat, I expect to go away because I am expecting that letter by the end of the week, so I'm asking you, when you approve the levy, to approve that subject to delivery of that letter from the city of Gluckstat later this week. Comments, questions about tax levy?
So we basically have the letter from Canton. We do not have the letter from Gluckstat on the garbage trash.
The, that is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And we're approving something that we do not have.
Um, what I'm asking you on the fire levy is to, remember, the law requires that you levy.
Trash pickup actually.
Oh, yes, sir. For Gluckstat, we do not have anything in writing that says they wish to participate. However, there is no option for them because they haven't had time to, to initiate the RFP for garbage collection.
Okay.
And remember, our garbage collection contract expires, I think it's April 30th of this next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, the general proposed, the general budget. This year, we are going to have a budget, or the proposed budget is $130.1 million, which is right about $2 million less than last year's budget. Our budget this year includes 10.3 million in federal funds, about 16, almost $17 million worth of state funds primarily for roads. It includes a total, including state and local monies, of $26 million for road activity. That includes everything from digging out ditches to laying asphalt, to putting bridges in, as well as the major projects down in the reunion area. 1.75 million for the library and 3.8 million for Holmes Community College. This proposed budget also includes raises for most county employees, and that raise would be 4% for those making 35,000 or less, and 3,000 for the remaining employees that are subject to your determination of their salary. And that's a general overview of the proposed budget that you have in front of you.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Paul.
I don't have any questions. I'm just going to make a motion, come out of the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, we're no longer in the public hearing.
Okay, you're out of the public hearing?
Yeah.
Then I ask you to adopt the tax levy and proposed budget with the change of North Madison County to Central Madison County, and with the two exceptions related to the solid waste tax and the fire protection tax.
Okay, can we get a motion on that?
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next, we would go to the consent items.
I would like to pull item 12.
Okay, anyone else have any items there we want to discuss? If not, can we approve all items except for item 12?
Make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 12 is from the nursing home. It is a, a walking park. It looks like they want to propose the bill out there.
They paying for with their money?
Yep, and. Yep, and I just had to pull just to really to let the community know this type of park is coming at the right time where COVID is bad. You know, we got clients out there in our nursing home that probably come out in the air and visit that they'll be more safer visiting their family. And it's just helped the whole area and the city of making that space out there more beautiful. Yeah, looks good.
So it's going to be open to the public too?
From what I hear from Daniel Logan, the director, it will be, it will be.
Paul, I go along with what you're saying. This is something that's been in the plan for a few years and it's come in reality now. And it's going to be good for the nursing home and also for Canton, city Canton as well.
Beautiful looking place.
It is, it's really pretty.
Yeah, I make a motion to prove number twelve.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion number twelve is been approved. Okay, we're going down to our first business.
Mr. President, Kyle York is here for you.
Who?
Kyle York, item number fifty eight.
Good morning, I'm Kyle York. I'm the pastor of Harvest Church. We're at eight twenty Wilson Drive in Ridgeland, and we're seeking approval on property tax exemption after the purchase of our building.
Okay.
Mr. President. Okay. Mr. President, that's what I was going to say. I appreciate you going through the process that you did as filing out the application. And with that being said, I would make the motion for approval.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Norman.
Good morning.
Morning.
I will be quick this morning. Since the county entered into an interlocal with the newly created municipality of Gluckstat, we have been verifying information within the legal boundaries and making all of the tax district changes related to the city of Gluckstat. Working with the tax collector, Kay is here, Kay Pace. And for the assessing and collecting purposes, today I have three exhibits. We were late getting these put together, so I would ask that the board and Mike, I don't know if we need to make this contingent upon the Attorney General where we stand with that approving. But what I've got today are exhibit A that pertains to real property parcels within the legal boundaries with the changes to the tax districts. Exhibit B for personal property. And then an amended recapitulation that I'll turn over to Mr. Ronnie Lott and Cynthia over here if it's approved. We need a motion and approval for these three exhibits. And I'll hand them over and we can move forward. Kay, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Were you voting to approve the, I guess, basically the tax roll for the city of Gluckstat?
That's correct, changes to the tax codes, tax districts.
We need a motion for
I make a motion for approval.
Of those exhibits. Is that second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks for the
Thank you. Thank you, Norman.
Mr. President, I would ask at this point with the attorney, have we heard anything on the approval from the AG's office yet as far as the agreement that we sent to them, what, a week or so, a couple of weeks ago? Concerning Gluckstat.
Yeah, sure, the AG agreed to expedite review of this. They know it's urgent and we don't have it back yet, but they're working on it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Good morning, board members. I bring to you item number sixty, award construction service term bids. Attached are copies of recently opened construction service term bids and spreadsheet tabulations. APEC Mississippi, AJ Construction and Ed Camp submitted electronic and CL bids to indicate that they were interested in bidding on the construction service terms term bids for the period of October one, twenty twenty one through September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. I recommend that the board take the following actions. Acknowledge all bids received and award construction service term. I'd have to have reverse auction because it's not required anymore.
Good, make good motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, item number sixty one, award commodity term bids. Attached are copies of recently opened commodity term bids and spreadsheet tabulations. I recommend that the board take the following actions. Acknowledge all bids received and award the commodity term bids. Also, with this one, we do not have to have reverse auction because it's not required.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I got a question for Tim when he gets up here, please.
There he goes.
Already here. How's the Dewise Road widening coming?
Supposedly, ceasefire is going to be out of the way on Wednesday. And we will be there Thursday to start our stuff. I have a contract to award the grading to Hemp Hill here. I think Supervisor Banks has signed those, so we'll get those to Hemp Hill. And as soon as we get done getting stumps out of the way, we'll start the grading work.
We budgeted five hundred thousand for that project?
I think so. They were right at three hundred.
So we got two hundred thousand for paving?
Right.
Okay.
Which is going to be a stretch.
All right, okay, I'm going to wait till you get down to the next item before I got the question, next question.
Okay. If you don't mind, I want to introduce somebody to you in the public. This is Brandon Johnson. He's our new assistant county engineer. He started two Tuesdays ago, so he's been here about two weeks.
Okay, welcome aboard. Glad to have you with us.
All right, first item I have to present to you is the preliminary plat for Springwood subdivision. Normally Scott presents these, but there's a variance request for the length of a dead end street on this one. And so we're asking that you approve the preliminary plat for Springwood subdivision.
Is that motion?
Motion.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and as you all know, there's a school coming in on that wants to tie in to four sixty three at Stribling. As part of that, there needs to be some intersection improvements. And we're working with MDOT on different options for that. But at this time, we want to go ahead and get the design done for this to get it as far along as possible because we've got a two-year timeframe before that school opens. So we need to get a an engineer engaged and get them to start designing it. So for that, I ask that you approve an engineering services contract with Stan Tech to do the intersection improvements for an amount not to exceed two hundred eighty two thousand dollars.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What, how could, you know, how could we make sure this intersection is open before that school is open? Because Carl and I share that intersection, and we're going to get blown up if
I understand, there's a there's a lot of moving pieces outside of our control on this. But the critical path is getting a design done at this point. That because that will take three or four months or maybe four or five months to to complete. So if we have a design ready for when we go through the LPA process, it will shorten that time. But the LPA process is not an easy process to get through. It's a it's a time consuming process, and you can't do multiple items at once. You have to get to an office review, then you can start buying right of way. You know, you can't buy right of way on the the front end. It's a it's a process.
I don't want that right of way stuff, that that's a that's a false front that gets hidden behind to to draw out projects. But the state owns and the school district owns about eighty, ninety percent of the property we're going to have to get.
Right, and we hope
I don't hear that right of way stuff for five and a half years.
No, this one won't take, this one won't take long to get through the right of way process. You just have to go through a specific, you know, A, B, C, D to get through the process. You can't
Brad, and he might be standing out there and you and
Yeah, Brad's out there.
All of them, I'm going to post their number on the Facebook when that intersection getting completed when those mamas trying to get their kids to school. So I'm just, I'm just letting you all know upfront, I'm going to be on this the whole way, and I'm sure
I got a question, Tim, because it was mentioned to me, and I can't remember who mentioned it, but it was mentioned to me that the school board and their design, whoever was designing this, had enough room also that they could get people through this intersection and onto the school property and have some, you know, have some driveway length and thing to where they could go to both schools off the highway, off the Stribling Road and on to their own property.
Sure, and that's one of the things that MDOT is looking at in order for them to get that driveway onto four sixty three. They have asked the school district to come back and do an internal traffic study. And supposedly, there was a letter sent to the school district by MDOT, which I have not seen. But supposedly, there was one sent requesting them do some onsite improvements to help keep four sixty three from being the stacking lane for the school, you know?
That's what it is now.
Which is what it is now. Right. So MDOT's in in that discussion. And and that was the piece that I told you was, you know, outside of our control as far as, you know, how that how that plays out.
Well, MDOT has sent a letter to someone who has to let
Somebody at the school district.
Okay.
I'm assuming it was Superintendent Burge, or Assistant Superintendent Burge.
We need someone from representative board supervisors making contact with the superintendent, the board, whoever it is that's over this project that's backing up traffic like mad. We need to make sure that we have somebody at the table helping.
We have been at the table. We've had several meetings along the way. MDOT has not given them permission to tie in a new driveway yet. They're they're waiting on that impact study, internal circulation, as I'm told.
That sounds like we're hurting cats, but
Well, it there is a lot of that, and that's the reason we want to go ahead and get the design started.
But whoever whoever in the future, if possibly, is holding up the process, they need to be singled out and brought to the table. Because what I understand Carl's talking about is a requirement for MDOT to the school board. They're not going to move forward if they don't build that capacity lane that comes in at the intersection. So he's right on the mark. But I'm not hearing the school board saying, we're on board.
Yeah.
You're you're exactly right.
So somebody from the school board needs to come in here and tell us that they're on board so we can move forward. Because this is going to follow on us, and we're actually going way out on a limb paying for design in the first place for a state road that ties Richard or whoever, the superintendent needs to come in here and tell us they're on board, that we're doing our part, they need to do their part. Because I've I've tried, and I'm getting radio silence here from from the the communication between the school board and MDOT.
I will, I'll make some calls.
Okay. Tim, why wouldn't we have someone in or ask someone from the school board to come in next board meeting and just give us update on where they are?
We can do that.
I think that's what I'm hearing, is that we do not know their thoughts or their plans.
Or who to contact.
Or who to contact. So it'd be good for someone, whoever their spokesperson is, that understand what Supervisor Banks and Supervisor Baxter is saying to come in and just just give us an update where we can work together to make this happen.
Sure.
District is that the problem?
Flits between me and Carl.
Okay, so four and
Two.
Two. So that's Bill Grissette and two, and Philip Husky and four.
Mm hmm.
You talking with school board member?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah.
Call them all in then.
Sheriff get it from everybody.
I think Jason Dean took two, I think Jason Dean took one on spot.
I believe so.
But but we just need the person that knows what's going on.
Okay.
And that can work together.
All right, I'll make that request to the school board.
And it'd be good for them to come in at the next board meeting, just give us a quick update.
All right, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, next sixty four.
Did we approve that?
Motion to approve.
We had a motion to say
Second, all in favor?
Next item I have is the project activation request for the same intersection. There's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money involved in this. And you have to do a project activation request with MDOT to start the LPA process, and that's what this is. So we request that you authorize that and then authorize the board to attach the or to sign the attached letter to send to MDOT.
Okay, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the final item I have is Thornberry Phase Two Final Plat. This is roughly, it's thirty three point nine acres, seventy two lots. Wearing surface letter credit has been received, and we do have the hard copy plats.
Motion.
Is that, oh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I did ask Tim to bring a short update on the signal light at Highway fifty one.
Can I get that, can I get right back to you? While I was standing here, the guy from MDOT called me.
Yeah.
So I'm going to call him right back, and I'll let you know here in a few minutes.
Yeah, you can come back in.
Okay.
Tim, Tim, before you go, you know anything about Stump Bridge Road Bridge?
Let me, let me, let me find out from Stan Tech. I'll let you know that in just a second as well. They're they're standing outside.
Okay, okay. Uh, Scott Weeks.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning. Item number sixty six, that has been updated. That is the planning and zoning draft minutes for August twelfth, twenty twenty one. If you could acknowledge that.
Make a motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next item number sixty seven is Tony Pierce. This was a request for an exempt mining operation extension. It's on Highway forty three north, property is on day one. They do have a little bit more land according to the DEQ that they could mine that's exempt by that four acre minimum. If you want to put a
Motion to approve. Is that second? All in favor?
Aye.
Just just tell Tony to make sure its paperwork don't expire.
Yes, do you want to put expiration on that, three or six months?
That'd be good. You got that running?
Yes, sir.
Six months.
Six months.
But if he needs something else, he needs to come back before it's been requested again.
Yes, sir.
Not just continue to run.
That three to six months, you want a six month expiration?
Six.
Next item is Larry Beaman Ellis. This is a zoning violation, nine oh eight Robinson Springs Road, Supervisor District Three. Find that the property is adjudicated to be cleaned up, it's a bunch of old junk vehicles and
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item number sixty nine is Old Jackson Road Commercial Park Site Plan, northeast corner of Old Jackson Road Supervisor District Four. This was approved by the Planning Commission on eight twelve of twenty twenty one.
Okay. Move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is Calhoun Station Church Road Retail Site Plan, southwest corner of Calhoun Station Parkway and Church Road. Property is on C two Commercial Supervisor District Two. This was approved by the Planning Commission on eight twelve, twenty twenty one. Daniel Woodridge is here to, I think he has a traffic study that they want to present.
Okay, Sheldon, will you bring Tim back in here, please? Come on up a little closer, Tim.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Daniel.
I'm Daniel Woodridge. I'm the architect for the project. Uh, this is a retail center at the corner of Church Road and Calhoun Station Parkway. There's some property there that was, uh, part of when, when they built the Exxon. Uh, there's enough room there that we have about three thousand, about thirty-five hundred square feet of retail on that site. Uh, it will share the drive, uh, off of Church Road that goes, uh, to the, uh, Exxon station. And we are proposing a drive, a, a right in, right out only back onto Calhoun Station.
Okay, Tim, have you looked at this?
I've had an initial meeting with the developer, the architect and the traffic engineer about the conceptual of the project. And at that time I said, look, you know, I need a traffic impact study in order to, to move forward with this. And, um, I believe Jonathan Kaiser did a traffic study for it and can answer any questions about the traffic better than I can at this point.
Is this what you saw, Carrie? And this is what you have a pro, you think this is dangerous? Okay, Jonathan, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In the handout that you have, um, figure five, which is a few pages, just about five or six pages in. It shows the recommended improvements. Um, the channelized right turn lane right now is about a hundred and forty degree angle, which is difficult for people that have, uh, mobility issues as you have to rotate your head so far around to see cars approaching from your left. So we had recommended a hundred and fifteen degree flattening of that channelized right turn lane and then an extension of that turn lane down to the new driveway so that that would give you, uh, some more merging and weaving area for the proposed driveway. Um, the distance to the driveway is, uh, in excess of two hundred and fifty feet. MDOT's access management policy requires a hundred and twenty-five feet of corner clearance from a signalized intersection. So this driveway has more than twice what MDOT requires on state highways for spacing from an adjacent signalized intersection. So.
Alright. Um, Carrie, you wanna come up and tell us what you?
Um, first of all, let me say this, and I didn't say this before when I was speaking. I'm not opposed to this development. Um, I, I think it's great for the county, great for the city. Uh, it's a nice looking building. Uh, but I am concerned for the safety aspect in that area. Um, you know, we have a high school right there with a lot of school age, uh, children using that intersection. Um, we have a lot of property to the west, the Hutchinson property that's gonna be developed. Uh, we have Calhoun Station Parkway that's in, being developed now. Uh, I don't know what traffic numbers were used, but Sullivan's Grocery is fixing to open up down there, uh, hopefully around January. And, uh, you've got thousands of people that live out, uh, off of Stripling Road. And so Stripling Road fixing to be a pretty busy road coming on to Calhoun Parkway, I would think going to, uh, the grocery store. So that intersection's fixing to, the traffic's fixing to increase tremendously in that intersection. Uh, I do have an issue. Uh, there's a major drainage ditch that goes through the middle of that property now, uh, that is proposed to be moved towards the intersection. I have a concern that in the future, if that intersection needs to be enlarged to handle the traffic, that drainage ditch by moving it closer to the intersection is gonna be a problem for, uh, the city. Uh, there's also a gas line in that area that has to be moved, but that's here than there. Uh, but I do, uh, I'm not gonna go over what I went over earlier with you, but I do wanna read something, uh, he was talking about MDOT. Uh, I do wanna read something, uh, from the MDOT Traffic Design Manual for Urban Driving Streets. And it says urban driveways should be restricted to locations where vehicular movement in and out of them minimize the disruption and the flow of traffic on a major street. Uh, I think we'll all agree that that's a major street. Um, and also there's a footnote to that that says corner spacing, no part of a driveway entrance or exit is permitted within the turning radius of intersection or within the site triangle, the flare of an intersection. Uh, so, you know, if you go out there and look at that, um, that flare coming off of Church Road on the Calhoun Parkway is very short now. Um, and, um, you know, the other morning we had a traffic accident on fifty-five that shut fifty-five down. And I think Sheriff T, he had just about called everybody in Sheriff's Office out to help direct traffic, uh, in Gluckstadt. It, it gridlocked Gluckstadt. Uh, there's a lot of traffic out there now and it's just gonna get more. And so my concern is, is the safety of it.
So your concern is a drainage ditch or?
Well, my concern is the driveway being right there in that turn lane of the intersection. Um, because you have people coming south on Calhoun Parkway and you got people merging off of Church Road on the Calhoun Parkway. And so you're gonna have people slowing down, uh, right in that area. Uh, I think he said it's gonna be a, a route, right in, right out only. So you're gonna have people coming around that curve off Church Road, gonna have to be paying a lot of attention to somebody slowing down to turn in. And then also the traffic southbound on Calhoun Parkway, uh, especially when schools out, coming down through there and people turning out of that area. Um, so it's just, it's just a big safety concern.
So you said it's two hundred and fifty feet from the yield to the driveway? Is that what you said?
Speaker, uh, site plan, figure.
Can you come to the microphone?
Shows the distance to the driveway.
Can you come to the microphone?
MDOT require a hundred and fifty.
And there, there's also some requirements about driveways being that close together too. I don't have it right in front of them, but I remember seeing something about having two driveways right there together like that. Just, we're putting a lot of entrance exits right there in a, in a major intersection.
And what's the requirement from the state?
The state.
One fifty.
Minimum corner clearance of a hundred and twenty-five feet from signalized intersections. More than twice that amount. And that's on state highways. This is not a state highway.
Alright, what about the drainage ditch he has concern with?
I did not do a hydraulic analysis. I did not do a hydraulic analysis of this. I did a traffic study for it.
So all, I mean, what you're telling us is all this about falls in the legal guidelines of what MDOT requires?
It, it meets MDOT's access management standards. It exceeds them by a factor of two. So you have twice as much corner clearance as MDOT requires for a driveway from a signalized intersection. As far as the intersection needing to be enlarged in the future, um, it, it is already at a rural footprint of a four lane, basically divided highway, um, because of the median that you have and, and the footprint of the current intersection. Uh, as far as the traffic volumes, if you wanted to look at, at table A one in the appendix, it shows where we added in the trip generation from the grocery store, the adjacent restaurant, the adjacent gas station and this retail site traffic. So.
What is the traffic volume on that road today?
There's a traffic count that's attached to it. Um, I, I have the hourly traffic volumes, uh, shown. We did not do a daily. We looked at the peak hours. The daily, um, doesn't give you a specific, uh, uh, capacity, uh, analysis as peak hour traffic volumes do. Um, but we have a peak hour count that's shown in figure two, from the existing traffic volumes. And then we added in all of this development that's proposed from the grocery store to the south and the gas station and the restaurants.
Tim, are you on board with what he's saying in this traffic analysis or do we need to make?
Looked at the traffic impact study, but I don't just, I don't disagree with anything he has said. But I would like to sit down and look at it a little, little harder.
Okay, can, uh, we move forward with Tim taking a look, you know, just pending on Tim's approval too?
If you feel more comfortable then miss, considering your district.
Yeah.
If you feel more comfortable, Tim, take a look at it. Cause I.
I'll approve it.
I'll look at it. I don't, I can't tell you nothing.
That's what, I mean, that's what got accounting.
Well, I'm here.
I'll approve it, uh, based on, you know, you, you looking at it and, and, and proving it all, proving of the plan. But I don't wanna, you know.
Thank you.
Alright.
Mr. President, I would, and I'm just listening as well. Uh, I do have a huge concern. I, I understand, hey, the building is great. Uh, you know, I hope the building continue to move forward, but I do have a huge concern with safety there. Um, cause it is very close to that intersection. I understand what MDOT says. I understand what everybody else, Jonathan says. But when you look at it, it is a, it, it, to me, it's a common sense safety concern. That, that's just where I'm coming from. You can bring all the numbers you want. I'm kinda like Mr. Banks. Now, he may not tell me a whole lot on those numbers, you know, I listen to you, but, you know, when you look at this, you know, the driveway is coming right in, you know, on the turn lane, you know, this, it's real close to it. And that is gonna be a huge, uh, intersection as far as traffic concern. The road is gonna have a lot more traffic on it in years to come, three, four, five years. At least we all hope that, that it will. You know, so, you know, I'm, it's gonna be hard for me to support it just from that point. But also while I'm here, you know, I went out there and looked at it. The, uh, I guess the intern, right turn only off of Church Road. Whoever designed that, and I don't know who it was, or whoever built it. Man, you can turn in, you can turn, anybody can turn in going, going west off Church Road. I mean, to me, that needs to be revisited as well.
We may have to put something in the median there to keep left turning traffic.
Too, cause that's just too easy to turn in against the traffic, you know, with people that want to do that for safety concerns. And I know you can't stop everything. Uh, but, you know, again, I do have a safety concern and, 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 you know, I'm gonna vote against it just for that reason, even though I know the supervisor in that district and I, you know, I respect, you know, his thoughts and everything. And we usually do go by, you know, what the experts say, but this one just doesn't add up to me on just looking at it. Thank you, Mr. President.
If you, if it comes back that you disapprove of this plan, I would like an alternative.
Sure, definitely.
Okay.
Okay then. Uh, babe. All in favor?
Aye.
And all oppose?
Aye.
Okay. We got one opposed. Okay.
Ready to move forward.
I'm ready.
Item number seventy-one is the Sullivan, excuse me, Sullivan's Market, Mansdale. Uh, it's northeast corner of Gluckstadt Road and Mansdale Road. Property's on C two Supervisor District Two. This was approved by MLH PD on eight nine of twenty twenty-one and the Planning Commission on eight twelve of twenty twenty-one. Uh, do have a representative here if you wanna talk with them.
Okay.
Uh, motion?
Second. He gonna show it to us. Okay.
Oh, that's nice.
Cute.
Very nice.
Good morning. Um, I'm Taylor Poole, uh, from Dean and Dean Architects. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Alan Grant, our firm's president and architect of record. He regrets he couldn't make it. He's got a pre-planned family vacation. It's been pre-planned for a year, so he's sorry he couldn't make it. Um, but I'm here also with Blake Press, the developer. Um, the proposed project is, uh, just north of Chapel of the Cross, uh, at the intersection of Gluckstadt Road and, uh, four sixty-three. We've got a historically derived design, uh, with brick detailing and influences from Canton and surrounding Madison counties. Uh, and we're here for any questions that you've got.
This property is going, uh, corner four sixty-three and Gluckstadt.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Crest property.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, okay. That'll wait. Beautiful buildings.
Thank you.
That's the other corner.
I like it.
Is this the same size as the one that's going actually next to the interstate?
I believe that one's. This is thirty thousand, so I, I believe they're about the same size.
Right.
Yes, sir.
No, I'm gonna find out pretty quickly that it's, the young will be so busy, it's too small.
It's too small. Maybe it's too, sir. Okay, um.
Great.
Motion on that?
Yeah, we had a motion in a second, I thought.
Yeah, we made a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been looking for something like that out there.
So what are they doing? I don't know.
Item number seventy-two preliminary plat for Charlton Place Part Three is in Supervisor District Four.
Move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
And number seventy-three preliminary plat for Lost Rabbit Phase Four A. That's thirty-seven lots in District One Supervisor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I got four items. Very quickly, the first one involves, excuse me, interlocal agreement between the county and the city of Ridgeland. I recommend that it be approved for the following reason. There are two new industries locating in the Ridgeland Business Park. One you know about is the, uh, beverage distributorship and the other is UPS. And both of those businesses have large trucks continually traversing in and out. And, uh, the engineers tell us that, uh, the, the road there, this is, uh, this is, uh, beginning at Cataline Road at Highland Colony Parkway to Business Park Drive in the city of Ridgeland. The road isn't strong enough to support the heavy traffic. So the road needs to be reconstructed and, uh, the county is proposing to help Ridgeland reconstruct the road at about one point five million dollars. And this is just like any other interlocal, uh, Ridgeland is gonna do the work and the county is gonna reimburse them monthly up to one point five million dollars. So this is interlocal, has been approved by the Attorney General, but, uh, it's a legitimate county purpose and I recommend it be approved.
Mr. President, I would like to add, uh, a little to that is that the total improvement of this road, uh, from estimates that I've seen was, uh, three point three million dollars, three point four. So, um, you know, with the county going in almost half, uh, to do that. And, and also, um, the two businesses have been informed that, uh, instead of, um, a tax break, I wanna have a law on taxes.
Yes.
We was gonna put this on the road instead of them coming and asking for a tax break. That doesn't mean they won't come and ask.
Yes.
But they have been notified that, hey, we're putting, putting the money on the road instead of a tax break for them. So, um, with that being said, I would like to make a motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? No opposing.
Alright. Item seventy-five and seventy-six, these are drug court items. The first one is in, uh, software operations and maintenance agreement between, uh, the drug court and the software operating company. Nothing unusual about it. I've read it and I recommend it be approved.
Is there a motion?
Uh, motion. Is this Stacy's, Stacy's court?
Stacy's, yes.
Second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And seventy-six, uh, is drug court training. They need, uh, training. They need lunch. You know, there'll be contracts. We have to approve for that and so you need to approve it. But it's been paid for by the administration of the court. But it's been paid for by the administration of courts. So none of the money is coming from the county, we just need to prove the, the use of the money.
Oh, move.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and item seventy-seven is broadband consultants. Uh, you heard from Tommy Carden earlier about, uh, various monies coming into Madison. Sydney Bank, uh, that's great, will receive one, another half. And, uh, that money can be used for broadband last mile developments, we know that. We also know that, uh, we don't know how the bipartisan legislature is gonna shake out, but it's, it's anticipated there's gonna be a lot more broadband money coming into Mississippi and therefore the county. So, under your instructions, we, we, uh, published for requests for qualifications to hire the engineering firm to come in to help us scope out and plan what broadband development would look like in rural Madison County. So we did RF, RFQ, request for qualifications, and we only got two responses. Uh, Neil Schaefer and Wagner Engineering, only two that responded to the request for qualifications. Again, now, this isn't any money, this is just who you were gonna work with to, to get a budget, to determine what it's gonna cost and what it's gonna look like. So Shelton and I, your committee, reviewed both of them, and we have unanimously agreed that both companies are great, we know both companies, but we believe that the Wagner Engineering Firm has a better proposal because they've got, they've done more broadband work, they've got more people, uh, that expert in broadband development, and, uh, we recommend, uh, that, uh, we choose Wagner Engineering to help us design broadband. And then we'll come later, once the budget is built out, to, to piece it out for you. But we recommend Wagner.
I just got one question. Is there, did they give you an hourly rate or a price, a cost estimate between the two?
No, no, uh, uh, these are just, uh, request for qualifications. So they, they're both telling us how qualified they are to come and help us. We don't know what the cost will be, and, because we'll negotiate that out. That's the next step.
We can negotiate that. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay.
Griffin, you agree with the choice?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just wanted to move exponentially, uh, because that money is coming into the state now.
Yes.
The construction bill been passed, so we need to get our plan up and running.
Yeah, we need to bring.
We do. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, next would be Shelton Vance, our county administrator.
Mr. President, we start with a letter from the Speaker of the House, um, Representative Philip Gunn. This is a letter that was sent to the board, uh, for you to acknowledge. This, this letter mentions the legislature's contribution of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund a fire truck, and we are to partially fund a fire truck, and we are in the process of getting this money from the state at this time.
Motion to acknowledge that letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shelton, while we're on Speaker Gunn, other board members, I'm sure will have an opinion on this, but I would like to try to change state funding for this intersection on four sixty-three and maybe some input on sending letters to the Lieutenant Governor, Governor, and the Speaker, just making them aware that we're moving forward on this project. Um, does anybody have any input on, or you want to let the lobbyists do it?
I think that.
Well, I think, um, we've always been our best lobbyists, to be honest with you, and I agree with you, and I would think that we should try to make that contact. And we're getting ready to rebuild an intersection on State Highway. Wow, I mean, it's. That, I would think that'd be something that, that MDOT would do, but, um, it's like we've just been tossed over to us. So let's see if we can get some help from the state.
We want to, uh, the head of MDOT, Brad White. Um, because I'm not real sure all these people know we're moving forward, and it's not that they wouldn't help us, it's just they don't know about it.
Yeah. I think that, that right now, the contact has been with staff and not with decision makers. I think that we need to send letters to some decision makers to see if we can get some help and some assistance.
But I also would, uh, would put in, uh, reunion, I mean, Bozeman Road, Phase Two as well. Both of these projects are very important to the county as far as moving traffic, safety, and, and I think that, uh, both of those projects, uh, to get to our lobbyists and also for us to lobby as well, uh, for that to be our two projects.
Can, can our lawyer draft up a, a kind and gentle letter? Traffic numbers, where, where we're sitting. Tim can help you.
I think that'd be good.
All right, that'll be my motion.
Okay, and I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And this is for both projects?
Yes, sir. Uh, Brad, uh, let's do head of MDOT, Speaker, Governor, and Lieutenant Governor.
And the MDOT Commissioner for this area.
Really?
Got to do the commissioner. All right.
Okay.
Seventy-nine, school bus.
Okay, before we get to seventy-nine, you may recall I sent you a, a notice that we are expecting. But unless there's an objection, I'm going to extend an invitation, uh, to the Speaker and other leaders, other Madison County representatives to be here Thursday afternoon. The truck is supposed to be here at two, and we'll take a picture of y'all and them with the truck, unless there is.
Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon. Yes, sir. And, and also I'm asking you to have a meeting that day because when the vendor gets here with the truck, they want a payment.
Really?
Can he get a check in the mail?
Yeah.
They might, they might take the truck back. Item number seventy-nine, please acknowledge the school bus turnaround list from the Madison County School District.
Okay. No motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item, item number eighty, we have been under contract audit. I think this is our fourth year in a row with, uh, after state audit notified us, uh, that they were not going to directly audit us. They have now provided a letter that, that will extend for another two years. Please acknowledge that letter.
Those are for knowledge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And over the next couple of weeks, we will bring back a contract for an auditor. Uh, item number eighty-one, the Canton Garden Club has requested that we participate in upstairs downtown. It is a night event that they have where, uh, owners of buildings open up the second floor and allow people to walk through and see the second floor. For instance, this building on the northeast corner, I'm sorry, northwest corner of, uh, Union and, uh, Center is opened. That's where some movies have been filmed, uh, there are residences as well as other, uh, offices, uh, office space that has second floor around the square that are open, and they've asked to be able to carry people through the old courthouse if you approve.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Shelton, we're gonna be, be ready for them as far as the, uh, outside, will be able to.
Uh, I believe, I believe that we will be, um.
Okay, good.
This is on, in November, and we are supposed to be complete before September thirtieth.
Good.
Okay. Um, the next item is a proposal from J H and H to assist in a fuel dispensing project. We have a ten thousand gallon fuel tank that we use for emergency services during, uh, storms, and, and when this was put in, uh, about fifteen years ago, it was just totally manual, um, and what we have found is that, um, we, we need more structure to this process. We need a, uh, we need a concrete area that people can pull up to, to be able to fuel their vehicle. We need a cover to protect them during the elements because normally there is a storm brewing when we're using this emergency fuel. We also need some control, some access control, uh, whether it be video camera or computer access to the pump, uh, to limit who is able to draw fuel from this, uh, from this tank. So I would ask that you approve this agreement with J H and H for us to obtain a cost, uh, and a plan on how that would look, uh, to improve that fuel dispensing station.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
And item number eighty-three relates to our board attorney. Our board attorney has been working at your direction to schedule a trip with the Secretary of Transportation, and we are in view of a trip, uh, being scheduled hopefully in October. And I'm asking that you approve travel for the board attorney, uh, to meet with, uh, U.S. Secretary of Transportation.
Make a motion for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Of course, of course.
I'm sorry, we need to include the board president on that as well.
I would include that in my motion as well.
Of course. Uh, going to meet with the Secretary of Transportation on what transportation?
Yes.
What item are you going, I know the bill grant for that, what, what else?
We've been trying to be with the Secretary of Transportation for a while now. We were given the chance to be with the Deputy Secretary, but we turned it down in favor of meeting with Booty Jack himself. So he's out on paternity leave, and I'm in direct communication with his office. I spoke with his Chief of Staff, and he's willing to see us. They say it'll be mid-September before he can see us. So the purpose of the meeting is for, it's a courtesy meeting, to directly meet with transportation issues in Madison County. I'm hopeful to bring with me the Central District Transportation Commissioner, Willie Simmons. He's agreed to go, and we'll be discussing transportation congestion issues in central Mississippi with him. So, you know, when you, when you meet with the secretary, Paul, you don't have a direct ask. It, it's more like a courtesy face-to-face meeting, but everybody knows that's why you're there. We're there to receive favorable approval for the raise grant. Hopefully that'll be a result of this. But we won't bring that to his attention, at least I won't. But they know why we're there, uh, and so, uh, so it's, it's general transportation issues. Now, while we're there, once I get a secure date, we're probably also be able to see others like Secretary of Agriculture. I think I could get that one, uh, to talk about broadband issues while we're there. But this is a transportation meeting with Secretary to familiarize him with Mississippi and this county.
Great, and, and, uh, and really I'm asking that question, I, I don't want the, uh, name of broadband left to the side.
Yes.
When we meet with our state legislators and our fellow people, we need to continue to put broadband in their ears.
Yes.
Uh, I know we got transportation problem all over young state, but there's, there's certain, certain areas that have broadband, uh, problem. So if you will, keep ringing that bell, uh, wherever you can.
We're gonna be ready. You know, when you talk about the infrastructure, the literal definition of it now includes broadband. It's not just surface transportation, roads and bridges, it's broadband, and so we will be doing that as well.
All right. Mike, I know that you've been working on this trip for a while.
Yes.
And you just not get a meeting with the, uh, Secretary of Transportation overnight. A lot of people don't get meetings with him at all, and this is very big for, uh, Madison County.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so we, we appreciate you, your consistency as far as continuing to work in that direction.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, now we're down to our controller.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Item eighty-four, I'm asking for your approval of the budget amendments and the interfund cash transfers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Items eighty-five through eighty-seven is the approval of the claims docket and two payroll dockets.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the last item is number eighty-eight, and that's the approval of the feet core, feet core claim docket.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Okay, Sheriff Randy. Okay.
Just two small items, Mr. President. Uh, for some reason, we, I think it's probably the Sheriff's Department's fault, but, uh, in two thousand nineteen, May and, and July, we failed to submit two contracts for pest control service. They were minimal amounts, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and a seventy-five dollar contract. Uh, not sure what we need to do going back, if we need to get you guys to acknowledge those or approve those. I'm, I'm not sure what we need to do to, to get those entered into the minutes. Looking for guidance here.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And, and on the fuel pumping station, uh, issue, uh, each time we have one of these occurrences like we did with this past storm, uh, that drive around that tank takes a pretty severe beating and it creates an issue. Could I get, uh, approval for Cornelius to send a tractor down and box blade and just dress that gravel? I don't know, I don't necessarily think it needs more gravel. I think it just needs to be pulled back and dress that drive up around that tank. Can, can we get that down?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Okey-dokey. Let's see here. O business.
Oh, I need to, I need to appoint somebody to Citizen Services Board. I was gonna appoint Russ Latino.
Citizen Service Board, appointe Russ Latino. Okay. That's a motion. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Russ, you're there.
I have, I have Russ.
Okay.
I would like to, uh, make a motion, and, uh, what it would be is to, uh, us to abolish the, the, the fire district at the mega site and put it back into the central, uh, district, fire district.
I second that motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You would like to abolish the, you would like to abolish the mega site district?
And put it back into the central district.
Sheila, do you understand what that motion was?
No, sir, can you repeat that?
Yeah, we, we're going to rescind and abolish the mega site fire district.
Put it in the central.
Place it back in the central district where it belongs. And we'll have one, one fire district that will be handling all of that. Okay.
Does everybody understand what that motion is?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Who made the, who made the motion?
I did.
I said I did.
All in car, okay.
Okay, and we voted it.
All in, I would like.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote it.
I voted yes.
I.
Three yeses, two noes?
Yes.
I don't know. I'd probably raise hands.
There were three ayes.
Three ayes.
All right, I voted no on it.
Good.
Mr. Baxter?
I got one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, one more motion.
That's three to two. Was that the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, want to appoint the board of the central Mississippi, I mean, central fire district.
Yeah.
Here are the names, Tim Chambers. April Love. Robert Jackson. Andrew Hughes. And Dustin Bullard.
Second that motion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No on that one. I want to put my own.
No.
And
Okay.
One more.
One more.
Is to, uh, direct Attorney Mike Espy, and I propose that to meet with the Silh Canton. and bring us a contract, and, and with that Board, and bring us a contract by next meeting to, uh, for this Board to consider approving.
Well, that Board is gonna approve it, um, now that we set up that Board.
Well-
That Board will make the approval. We're gonna, we, we, you know, we, we may have to do some, you know, uh, I, I would say reviewing of it and, and, and giving that Board, uh, our advice. But I don't see, I think that Board will approve-
Contract for what, Mr. Griffin?
The, the, uh-
Fire protection.
Yeah, I think the Fire Protection Board is gonna approve-
Were you, what was that motion again, Mr. President? The last one?
I believe direct the Board Attorney and the Board President to retain the contract with the City of Canton for the proposed fire district.
Along with the fire district commissioners.
Along?
Yeah.
Along with fire district commissioners.
Yeah. It's gonna be, it's their contract, it's their tax dollars.
To have it back in front of this Board next meeting.
Yeah.
That was the, we gonna meet, that was a short meeting though, Sheldon. I'm talking about the regular-
I'm, I'm asking you to meet on 9/9 to approve the payment of a fire truck. You're talking about 9/20.
Yeah, 9/20.
Okay.
We don't have all those names too, Mr. Griffin. We need to get the-
I have an item too.
Uh, the names are-
Tim Chambers?
Tim Chambers.
Uh, April Love.
I'm sorry?
April Love. Robert Jackson, Andrew Hughes, and Dustin Bullitt. Yes, they need bonded.
Yep, they're gonna have to be bonded.
Yes. Just like any other fire district.
Most, most fire districts pay the bonding out of their own tax money?
Exactly, they're gonna have, they have the tax-
But they have none.
Yep, they'll have you.
Not until, not, not until January. But they will have, they will have tax dollars.
Okay, that was a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
And, and read that motion again.
No, unless they voted on it too.
I have one item.
We haven't voted, voted on this motion yet.
I thought we did.
Not the last one.
What, what is that motion, Ron?
Sir?
What, re, reread that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Griffin, second by Supervisor Banks, direct the Board Attorney and Board President to retain the contract with the City of Canton for the fire protection, for proposed fire protection district along with the fire district commissioners and return on 9/16/21 for Board approval.
Yep.
Pretty close to it.
Is that what you want?
Don't rag anybody, it's close to it.
What do you, how, how do you want it?
All of it in there.
I don't, I don't know. Uh, I don't, I don't know.
Paid by?
You know? I don't know if, if our Board would need to approve, uh, contract with the fire, that that is, that the fire district is actually gonna be in with the City of Canton. We're not part of the contract, I don't know why we would be approving the contract.
So we just want to acknowledge?
We want to acknowledge, we, we will acknowledge that contract, but that, but the, the, I, uh, we asking our Attorney Jack, who's the Attorney for the, for the Central District, until they, they can hire their own attorney at some point. But, um, we wanna be sitting in and helping, making sure that the organization is run, is, is moving in the right direction. That's, uh, what we interested in, if they continue to move in the right direction. We don't, at some point, we will be out of the fire, you know, the fire department's business, that's their job, that's what they, that's what they're doing in all the rest of these-
How about withdraw your motion and let's make the motion like, you wanna withdraw your motion? But first withdraw this motion and then make different motion, right?
Yeah, we can withdraw the motion and the motion, uh-
Do you withdraw your motion?
If you wanna make it.
I'll make the motion that, um, we asked-
I would, Joe.
That we asked the Attorney, our Attorney Mike and, and myself, work with the, uh, the new Commissioners to help them, uh, with the contract with the City of Canton. And that contract then, once it's, once they've done it, can be brought back to us for us to look at, so we'll know that it's in place. But we've gotta control certain things within that, we want certain things done in that contract, to make sure that everything that, that the county is obligated for is taken care of. And that's why we're gonna sit in on it with the contract.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's your second, Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Okay. And all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay then.
I've got some new business.
You okay, new business?
Uh-huh. There's a, there's a little yellow building in the City of Madison that's kind of across the street from the Methodist Church that the county owns, and, um, it's been used by the Junior Auxiliary since the early eighties because I was involved in it back then. Anyway, long story short, um, the City of Madison would love for us to quit claiming that building to them, and that would be my motion.
I was seconded with a question to our lawyer. Can we do that?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
What we need to do, what we need to do?
This is, the building is valued at $105,000, and we can donate now, except for this, you can declare this property surplus, not need it for county business, you can declare it surplus, and it has no value, and then do it, donate it to City of Madison. You can do it that way, but we have an appraisal that's four years old that says the building's worth $105,000. Jim Turner did the appraisal, so it's got value.
We don't use it though.
You can declare it surplus. You can declare it surplus and you can donate it, you can quit claiming then as surplus to the City of Madison. You can do that, but it has a value. So you are transferring $105,000 of value of a building to a city.
Don't like lawyers talking out both sides of your mouth.
No, I'm not. Oh, I'm not. Why, why, why do you think it's a contradiction?
You saying that we can declare surplus and quit claiming?
I'm telling-
In the same sentence, you are saying that, uh, it got a value that is a hundred something thousand dollars.
So let me be clear.
Okay.
The question was, can we quit claim the building to the City of Madison? Uh, I first said no, but I'm backtracking on that, alright? So now I'm saying you can do it, but only on the one scenario, and that is if you declare that the building is surplus and has no value to the county, then you can, because it's surplus, you can do it that way.
And it is surplus, it's just sitting there.
But I'm saying that it's got a value and a worth, and I'm not sure it's surplus, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So I'm, it's not, I'm not talking out both of my mouth, I'm making a statement and clarifying it.
Well, I understand it, and, uh, as far as value to the county, it has had no value to the county. I, I know since 1984, um, I, I don't know when it ever had value to the county, but from 84 to the present day, it's had, it's had absolutely no value to the county whatsoever, and no, and, and the county has not done anything with it at all in that period of time. I would say that I make the motion that we declare it, uh, surplus to the county and at, at no value for the county. The only benefit to us would be that it's given to someone that, that can be highlighting things with the Junior Auxiliary or whoever in, in Madison. So I'll make that-
I second the motion.
Okay. Motion is that it's declared surplus, we, we can go ahead and give it to the City of Madison. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, there you go.
Alright, alright. Would that motion, declaring it surplus and giving it to the City?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you got, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay. Now, uh, is that all the old business? Okay, come on.
We can hear you.
You can hear me.
Okay, here we go. The first one was the Stump Bridge Road. There's, I talked to Stan Tech, they've got three days of dry weather that they need. All they've gotta do is put the asphalt down and put the guardrail up.
Alright.
But the problem is, is it's wet out there right now, so they're having to let, let it dry. By the time it gets dry, it gets wet again, so-
I was down there yesterday, when they're wet.
I'm just telling you what I was told.
Okay.
Alright. Second item was the, uh, Highway 51, a Green Oak signal. I just talked to MDOT, and that has a February letting, which means that's when they actually let the, sign the contract with whoever's the low bidder, so I would imagine that will start in March, early April, something like that.
Okay.
Alright.
Good work, Nick.
Thanks.
New business. Did you just give update on Highway 51, Green Oak?
I did.
Okay.
You need it again?
No, I was just talking with Supervisor Baxter that-
February letting.
February.
February 9th.
February, uh, it'll have a February letting, so whatever-
Okay, good day of-
Commission will approve it in February.
Thank you, Bud.
Okay. New business. There you go.
Mr. President, the only thing I have is you, you may know that in September, the US Census Bureau is releasing information necessary for redistricting. I suspect that you will be involved in that in the next several months. CMPDD has done redistricting from Madison County for the past two times, if I read the Board minutes correctly, and I have a proposal from them, or if you choose, I can come back to the next meeting with a proposal from any other company that you wish to consider.
I'm ready to get it on.
I'm with me.
Okay, what CMPDD proposes is two phases. Number one, they would take the data from the Census Bureau, overlay current districts, and determine whether or not redistricting is required. I know we all have opinions about that, but they'll do it from a mathematic, uh, approach. If redistricting is not desired or required, there is no charge. If they move to Phase Two, it's 24,000, uh, uh, total contract cost.
Yeah. Okay, uh, can we get a motion to, um, move forward?
I make a motion for approval?
Yeah. All in favor? Okay.
And the next thing I have are just executive session items.
What?
Executive session items.
Okay. Okay. Can we go and get a motion to go into-
Executive session.
Close determination to determine whether or not we need to go into executive session, so then we can make another motion, then we go into executive session. Set it down.